Thanks for your service.
I see, I mean, I see the need, but I also see that, I think, the city, I mean, you've been presented budgetary numbers, I think you just gotta try to figure out if it can work. There's a lot of other things, I think, the city for new hires, not just fire, but I think they have to look at their retirement, I think you have to look at a whole group of things to make this, make this work, so.
And there's also, and we've talked about it with the authority, there's some options that we need to make sure we're all on the same page on, because if you do, like, if you, let's say you did individual millages, and it passes here and passes in Lowell Township, then sales over to Gents, they're not going to now have to pay that, they're still gonna have to come up with that money. So I don't think you got, you can have a Plan A, you have Plan A, D, 1B, 2B, Plan C, and then obviously Plan D would just be you paying for it.
The cleanest way, I mean, it would, it would ever require for all the communities to relook at the current funding mechanism for the, but the cleanest way to do this is, I bring up the Brighton Fire Authority as a number one example. Brighton Fire Authority, now they, in the, they're, they're an authority of City of Brighton, Genoa Township, Brighton Township, and the Eastside State, and I believe it's seventy-six square miles for approximately forty-six thousand people, so it's a larger, it's a larger community. They assess, they, their authority levies a millage that all three jurisdictions pay, and I don't know how they got that, I don't know how they put the language to start the authority, but the authority's only been in place for probably twenty years, it hasn't been that long. And rather than having their general funds subsidize the fire, it's strictly done out of the authority, and then it alleviates those communities' general funds to deal with roads, police, whatever it is they may need to do. And they, they, they levy a millage of one point five mils. Now, that gets them probably eight hundred thousand dollars, where if we did a one and a half mil levy, I just did a quick estimate, it'd be about a hundred fifty thousand for us, it'd probably be, you know, three hundred thousand from, for Gents Township, and three hundred from Lowell, because they have higher taxable values, I mean, so, I mean, they, you know, that could, that could be a sustain, that could be a sizable amount for your fire operation. And then, the other, you know, if you, if you subsidized it correctly, then you wouldn't have to come back to the jurisdictions all the time for new equipment, where they can, they can just subsidize themselves. Now, I don't, I've, I've said this before, I don't know if that could actually happen, but it's the cleanest way to do it.
And there was talk too about Lowell Township, because they don't cover all of Lowell Township. So if they assess the millage on Lowell Township, but then, I, they sounded like they were pretty confident that they could supplement Alto Fire and then, you know, they're, they weren't in, I think, in Blue County, right, the share of coverage?
Right, they were, they were looking at public safety.
Right.
Yeah, they're looking at public safety, and they've had that conversation.
There've been, and the progress we've made on this, especially, I would say, last year, at the fire authority level is leaps and bounds above where, where we started. So this presentation is the logical next step. I think, you have just what for Gents left?
Right.
On Thursday?
Mr. Mayor, do you have any sense where the townships are in response to, I mean, are, do you anticipate, I know they've only presented it to one of them, but do you have any idea?
Um, I would say that, I, I think it's hard to say, I think, for Gents Township is probably more, I don't know if informed is the word, uh, they're more in the loop because Tim Whitbox sits on that fire authority. The township, Lowell Township representatives report back to Jerry Hill, and he attends the meetings, obviously, when he can, so there's an extra communication step on the township side, but it's night and day, the, um, level of, um...
Because it's gonna take all three of us, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Or it doesn't, it'll happen.
Yeah, and that's the problem with figuring out how to fund it, is it's gonna happen to all three, no matter what, I mean, if it's approved, it's approved for all three, you can't say, um, you know, we'll cover Lowell Township and Lowell City during the day, but if there's a call on Gents, then Rodden still has to show up or something, you can't do that, it's too...
But all three entities have to say yes.
Have to be on board. And from an authority standpoint, I would say that all three, and the representation from all three entities that I serve with is all on board. I don't think there's a...
It was very positively received last time, that and Lowell Township, I mean, there were very few questions, and it, I mean, there was not, there wasn't any negative at all.
And everything we've asked them to do for this presentation and before, even when they were just presenting to us, they've given them what we needed, and I've come back with twice what we needed. And we've gone back to them with other questions, and they came back and answered four, you know, and, and it's been...
So they don't have the budgetary, I'm, I'm the new guy, so they don't have the budgetary concerns that we do?
For them to...
For them to say seventy grand?
I don't know about their budget overall, but from this, from this funding source, it looks like they were looking at other sources of funding as well. I think it's gonna be additional revenue for anybody, because you have, even if you get that grant, you get that grant before you even are considered for the grant, you have to prove it's sustainable for years beyond the grant, otherwise you end up, like, sitting on there praying for an extension every two years, otherwise the whole thing that you've put together falls completely apart.
And it's a federal grant?
Correct. So you gotta wait for...
Is that a pipe dream? I mean, should we even...
There's no bad grant to apply, yeah.
Well, I get, yeah.
It only takes about thirty hours to apply for, that's a literal figure, um, a lot of time you gather all the information around, put your areas together, go through everything, submit it in, um, and there are several thousand departments, you know, applying for this, and, and again, it's not only just statewide, it's, it is nationally, you know, a lot of the larger departments.
Okay, that sounds to me like a lot of...
I'll apply, wait a minute, you want me to, please?
Just, just to reiterate too, just, I give you the military rates for those townships. Lowell Township's military rate is point seven seven oh three, for Gents Township is point eight four six four, so less than the mill they're assessing. But they, I mean, they don't, they don't pay for police, they don't, they don't, that doesn't subsidize police, all the things that a city requires.
And you can't ask people to trade one service for another. You can't say, well, here's full-time fire, right, but have the loss to the police or the DPW, or whatever else it is. Forever and it's known, you can tell when you're in the city that has a DPW and when you're in a township that doesn't. Yep, go get your wallets, don't want on one corner of all the Nash and the other one, and see who gets to you first. You can tell that there's a level of service here, that we provide people that is better than they can get elsewhere, and that can't suffer to add in addition, in my opinion.
So will you guys come back to us then, after you've heard from the other townships? What's the plan here?
The next authority meeting, I think we were gonna get a, a synopsis.
We have a budget here, a budget meeting this week to go over what our projected budget moving forward is going to be, and then, yeah.
When are you presenting to the other township?
Uh, last night was Lowell Township, for Gents, that's why.
And then the fire authority meeting, so, the figure or something like that, anything?
Could you come back, after, after you guys have had your meeting and everything else, uh, that way we can get it, you know what I mean, not secondhand or anything?
Yeah, Mayor of this, that means represent the city, so, I mean, if there's something that comes out of it that maybe can move forward, we have an absolutely, we, yeah, we have it.
And there's been a real good line of communication between Jerry, Tim, and I on this, full process for the last couple of years, so, we didn't do division meetings, because I think we got ice on, but outside of that, the communication between the townships and us has been pretty great, and then those guys have been able to bring us back everything that we've asked for so far, so I don't anticipate that changing regardless of the next steps for either of the boards.
Glad for having these conversations. When I first got this chair, I talked to Rodden, this is something that I kinda wanted to see after, and so, I'm positive about it, but hopefully everybody else is, and hopefully we can figure out a date.
Well, it's a big change, but, you know, it's something we've been talking about on and off for probably close to ten years, that sooner or later it's gonna have to happen, realistically, it probably should've happened four or five years ago.
Yeah, and there's four numbers that have, that were staunchly, that even I, we started talking about it, gotta recognize, okay, it's not just a want anymore, it's officially becoming a need, and the factors that play into the increase in call volume are not gonna get better, they're gonna get worse.
So she didn't talk about how I'm available during the day, but the fact remains that if I'm not on a crew with a white power crew, and we're doing storm work, or working primary, or, you know, we're doing anything where I got guys in the air, I'm not leaving them in the air, and I'm not shutting down my job so I can leave. My priority, and I put it this way, but that pays my bills.
Right.
My priority is to citizens and the folks of Lowell, like, I can't leave during the day.
And over, historically, even your third shifters have just been guys working that job so they can be in line when the first shift goes up.
Right.
Like, the nine-to-five is the ideal. So you have guys that are third shift, and third shift, and third shift, and the minute that nine-to-five opens up, then...
We're really lucky to have some staff that are either self-employed or have employers that will allow them to work from the station for a day, or, or take a PTO bill, I mean, our people take a PTO here, they come in, cover him, Ron and I are gone, and we have to have somebody in town. Right now, we're extremely fortunate, so...
Yeah, my former community had that issue, we had, you know, we covered, we covered our city, but we also, we also had an agreement for the surrounding township, and the, the, the issue that we had, we had a full-time chief, but everyone else was volunteer, but the saving grace they had there was, they had daytime coverage, retirees, things that you could do the inspections, handle the calls, we don't have that, and daytime coverage, I don't disagree, it's a need, it needs to be, this needs to be there, I guess.
Well, it was easier too, when people were coming into that job, and they were doing it until they retired, but that's not the case anymore, because the, it's easier in two thousand nineteen to cut a commitment out of your plan than it was in, you know, whenever before. So the first thing to go isn't gonna be the thing that pays your bills, it's gonna be the thing that you supplement, you do to serve, you do for extra money, you do for whatever reason, it's gonna be the first thing to go. You have a baby, that's the first thing to go, you go from four days a week to five at work, that's the first thing to go. And the commitment isn't, and a lot of guys aren't getting into it for twenty years anymore, because it's not a call a day, it's four or five calls a day, and you say at some point that twenty years of one call a day then only becomes five years at four calls a day. So, and the burnout is there, and, you know, and people aren't moving into communities and setting down roots anymore, they're moving into communities five, six, seven years, and then there's another house, and then there's this, and then there's this, and families are growing, people. It's not as consistent as it used to be, where this provides some kind of consistency, some kind of...
I've had jobs in a fast way here in town that would want me to leave for warehouse. I've been with Power Company for twenty-one years, and they supported it a hundred percent of the same. Again, if I got guys in the air, working primary with them, I'm not going anywhere.
Well, before, you had people at the DPW too, that would come over and run calls, but that was the same thing, if they're underneath a truck that they need dumped that day, they're not gonna pull up, run over the truck, truck, truck. All right.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on that? All right, item C, striking taxes, Sue.
As Treasurer of the City of Lowell, I exercise due diligence in an effort to collect the personal property taxes listed on the attached Exhibit A. I try contacting them by placing phone calls, past due notices, personal calls and visits. I'm requesting you now, four fourteen fifty, be striking from the rules. Recommended motion that the Lowell City Council approves striking the two thousand thirteen personal property taxes from Lowell.
I'm assuming you've been trying to collect this for quite some time, then?
Yes.
This is lower than years before, isn't it, a little bit?
Yeah, there's less and less the length of personal property, because now people can monitor the exemption, so I don't have as much...
Yeah, personal pa, property tax, no.
But there's a few strikers, sometimes don't, and they don't file the exemption, so...
Now, that motion then, to strike those taxes?
I'll make the motion that we strike, uh, strike those taxes, four, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Support? Any other questions for Sue? Susie?
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Camfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Item number B, public hearing for fourth of February, um, to remove that four, a portion of Riverside Park from the red plane.
You skipped D.
I skipped D. Oh, public hearing for the small urban program, Michael.
One of our requirements, as a participant in the small urban program, call for projects would be to hold a public hearing. I was saying it's a public hearing for Monroe, construction of Monroe, to be eligible for funding in this program, um, the program, Lowell is a, is a special community eligible for funding under the small urban program, um, and, um, projects, we are allowed a maximum reward of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, with a minimum of twenty percent match. Monroe is in the, is a federally eligible road, and, um, we were allowed to submit for construction costs to be funded for that. We did a, we did a, get an estimate from Williams Works, I received a preliminary estimate, they come back and explain in more detail, but the preliminary estimate for Monroe from, from Fremont to Avery is seven hundred and two thousand dollars, um, we would, we would request to see funding for three hundred seventy-five thousand. That is, that, that seven oh two is on a very conservative end. One of the things that they took into account was the fact that that will, it's really gonna be dependent of what the under, what the underlying, um, um, grade, gray sand is underneath, if it's stable, if it's stable to where it doesn't really need to be removed or replaced, that cost does go down quite a bit. Also, um, there, there are, there may be some requirements to, to do some water and sewer work in that area, which, if that's done, it would require we construct a water and sewer cover portion of that. We haven't gotten down that, down that road yet, we're just trying to submit a project. This project, if it can't be awarded under the small urban program, I had, um, the county or GBMC has placed it as a request in their two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-three, um, Transportation Improvement Plan, federal, federal projects, so, um, there, if we don't receive the funding from the small urban, we still have that option as well. So, um, we don't, we don't need to actually take action after this, I just submit the grant, and we can go from there.
Based on the numbers you gave us, we'd still have to come up with approximately quarter million dollars?
Correct.
After everything?
Correct. But, like I said, that, you know, we might be able to subsidize some of it through water, because it's gonna, it's gonna, one of the things that's gonna be required is to be of a four-inch line, water main there now, it would have to be approved with an A. So, that, and then, you know, so then that might be eligible for funding under the water fund, which is in raw and raw shape, um, that might be able to alleviate some costs. But it's also a major street, a major street fund, um, at this time is in very good shape to where it could cover that difference.
Any other questions for Mike on that?
Do you need to open that for public comment on the public hearing?
We need to open the public hearing. Any, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll welcome any public comment on that. None? Any other council comments on that? All right, then we will close the public hearing. Now, with item E, we will set a public hearing for February fourth, um, we've been requested to consider removing a portion of property from Riverside Park, from the City of Lowell Parks and Rec master plan by the Unity School Investors. We'll meet here at City Hall on Monday, February fourth, at seven P M., and we'll have a public hearing on these actions to facilitate redevelopment of the Unity School property. Any comment or issue with that?
I would just bring up that Todd Schell did come to the Parks and Recs meeting looking for endorsement or support for this project. There was concern by three of four members in attendance that we really need to see the whole plan for this, because it really affects our access to the boat ramp and the use of that area, and the proposed swap would give us an area that they would pay for landscaping and turn into a, a garden area, but if we don't end up with any additional property from the property swap, that really would probably be better used as a turnaround for the boat ramp, rather than backing three hundred feet in from Monroe Street, in a fifty-foot strip, which is already really owned there, so...
They're not asking for Hunt Street, so I don't see where we're losing access to our boat ramp.
Well, we only have fifty feet in width, and that's not enough room to turn around with a boat trailer, so you'd have to back three hundred feet in, whereas that area that would be the proposed garden area that they want to swap with us, it could be a turnaround.
Yeah, but if they swap it with us, we can use it for whatever we want, we don't have to take their landscape, their money and landscape to be anything, it's, we can use it for what we want. And I think the hangup, um, at least in the discussions I've had, is a completely separate property swap that hasn't even come into discussion yet, that, I don't know.
Just such an important piece to the city there, that I think we'd be better to give a direction, that's just one opinion.
Yep, and I think that they are open to that, from the discussions we had with them at DDA, and then the separate meeting that we had with them, but I think we also have to be careful that, I think we can talk about it all during the public hearing, but it sounds like we're, not me personally, but we're ready to sync this whole development based on asking for something that's in the third phase of the plan. Perry?
I'm just gonna report that, um, it was brought up at, at our meeting, uh, a motion was made, and there was no, it did not receive any support, um, from the three other members, so it never did go to a vote, um, for a recommendation, I know it's up, up to the City Council, um, there was just, uh, some things, um, I'm not opposed to, opposed to it, there was just some questions that I thought needed to be answered, um, I know there, you're talking about further down the road, possibly trading that north property for the south property, well, Mr. Shaw in our meeting said, you know, and we've always talked about that would be a great swap, and he basically said, he's, he, he didn't, he didn't give a rip about that north property, he was just trying to do that to appease the city. I mean, so, you know, it's been said before that, oh, that's where we've got, where we can really make this swap and, and everything, and, and he came, in our meeting, he said he really wouldn't, he didn't care about that north property.
Is that the same indication that you got from the other meeting, that we said in on down stairs?
Nope, that's, that's not, so I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, there, for us to endorse it, there, there was too many conflicting, uh...
Perry? By the, by the north property, you mean where they park the...
True, the north property up...
Up on the hill?
Yep, closer to Avery, and there was, there was just, why we couldn't, why I think, I can't speak for the rest of the members, we couldn't endorse it, because there's, there's just, you're correct, with, uh, Mr. Zanscher, we had a great meeting, um, and then the other party was at our parks meeting, and Mr. Zanscher wasn't, and during that conversation, he said that, you know, it, it got heated at times, and he said that, you know, he really didn't care about that north property. So, again, I think we're, the, the parks is not opposed to it, um, but I think there just needs to be, there needs to be some more definitions, some more what's gonna happen to that whole property, before we would endorse that transfer. Thank you.
I think everybody supports the project, it's gonna be a great project, and it will happen, no doubt about it, it's a...
One of the things that...
Say no doubt.
One of the things that struck me, I was at the meeting, when I saw the, the property lines, and I was not on the City Council then, I just came to watch the meeting about the property swap, one of the things that concerned me, when I saw the narrow strip, and I think that's what Greg's referring to, is fifty feet, I watched people use the public access, and there's, one of the things that concerned me is there's not enough room for somebody to drop a boat off, and if they own both sides of the road, and I know they said, oh, we have no intention of taking that away, but they have the ability to, is that what we can address, all these kind of things on the fourth, is what it's for?
Yeah.
Because I think we need to get everything set, because, and I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, but I think there's kind of a, bit of a mess over there with a power line that didn't have a proper easement.
Yeah.
And so if we continue on with things that aren't really settled, but by golly, we're gonna do the right thing later on, we could be looking at something really stupid in the future. I mean, public access, even though the river, you can't go further than, than the dam, but it's still, people love to fish there, and it gets used a lot, I live across the street, and that, that made me real nervous, and I asked Todd Schall about it, he came into my store and did some shopping, and, and he said, oh, well, you know, we don't have any intention of doing that, well, then let's get that all spelled out, so that we don't lose access.
It's gotta be a win-win for everybody, and I think it will be, so I look forward to the meeting and the discussion.
All right. Very good. Item F, Frank, Resolution five nineteen, Addendum two, Mike's employment hearing.
So, can we go, so have you, are you setting that?
Yeah.
Are you or not setting that?
Yeah. So we have to vote on it. All right, uh, Susie, over a motion to set the public...
So...
Support? Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Camfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
All right, now, item F, first, the, the, Mike's... Okay.
Excuse me, would you like me to hand this?
Yes, please, yeah, I don't, he pointed at you, so I...
What you have in your package is an addendum to the existing employment agreement between the city manager and the city, and what I've done is I've identified in this addendum the changes that were made from the existing employment agreement, and I'll just summarize it very quickly for you. First of all, in section one, what you're doing there is recognizing that for the next three years, beginning on July one of this year, you will, as you have in the past, review Mr. Burns's performance, but you will then, after making that review, give him a salary increase in each of those three years of no less than three percent over the prior years' annual salary. That's the change, building in a, a minimum increase of three percent for each of those three years. Second of all, in section two, amend the severance pay provision to provide rather than six months severance pay, twelve months severance pay, and again, if Mr. Burns would find employment elsewhere at any time during that period, it would reduce that or eliminate that severance pay. Section three allows, um, this is just a clarification of vacation pay, that it's the same as other management level employees with the city, the reason why change was needed here was that the original agreement, if you remember, Mike, started in the, in the middle of that fiscal year, and so we had to make an adjustment for vacation pay in that first year, so this is just to make it consistent for every year going forward, you know, it's the same number of days that other management level employees receive, and that, Mike, is something... And that, Mike, is how many days?
I'm at 20 days.
20 days.
I'm at maximum.
Thank you. Section four, uh, sets commencing with this next fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2019. Uh, he may elect to be paid for any unused sick leave, uh, that he's accumulated during just the prior 12-month period. So he can cash out his unused sick leave on July 1 of each year. Uh, the sec, the section five, um, is again a cleanup item. This current agreement provided for reimbursement to attend, um, the International City Managers Association Conference. For the first year of the agreement, uh, this provides up to $1,500 a year to permit him to attend that conference every year, um, that the appointment agreement is in effect. Residency, that's also, uh, section six is a cleanup item. Remember that when, those of you that were here that remember that Mr. Burns originally lived in Cascade, right?
Correct.
Yeah, lived in Cascade and moved here, uh, once he purchased the home. This simply says and recognizes that he now resides in the city. It says during the time he's employed as a city manager, he shall reside within the city limits unless suitable housing is not available at a reasonable cost, in which case he must live within 20 miles. That's, those are the changes. Uh, be happy to answer any questions, anyone who has.
The only one that, that I have that is in section four, didn't we not put a cap on it for 12 days, like about two weeks worth of...
Yeah, we can't, yeah, right.
I don't know what you get. If you get 20 days, then we say we will give you...
Right. No, what it...
About 12 days?
The way I'm reading, yeah, the way I'm reading that agreement is that during the prior 12-month period, so it would be, it'd be no more than 12 days. You can only give me that 12 days.
The 20, the 20 days is vacation.
Yeah, but only sick days is we got.
I only get 12 days.
Okay. I just remember that and it's what?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for this? All right. No, for motion to approve Resolution 519.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve Resolution 5-19.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Susie?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right. Last item, G, is a discussion on council representation on the boards. Uh, Sue sent me the list somewhere. Got it. Okay. So now we have Cliff here full-time and the rest of us have been sitting. You know, there's a ton of experience up here now. I thought we'd just go through the boards that were required to have representation on. I know we need to find some for Cliff. Um, and then I think Jim, you were, you just took over a couple that...
Yeah, I attended the harbor board meeting, yes.
So, now that we have all five of us, we can just go board by board. Um, Marty, uh, zoning board and then the appeals board, still. All right. Uh, do we need a council? We've always had a council representative on the airport board, right? Up until the last couple of years?
My understanding, Jeff was the last one.
Yeah, Jeff Altus was on it for a lot of years. Um, is anybody interested in representing the airport board?
When does that meet?
Third Wednesday.
These times?
7 o'clock at the airport.
Yeah, I'd do that one.
Okay. Any, uh, objection to that?
No.
All right. Uh, Mr. Salzweedle, harbor board still works?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Chambers, me. Uh, DDA, I have to be ready?
I stay up till 8:00.
Okay. Uh, historic district commission, now that's one I just took over for Jeff because he was gone.
When do they meet?
Fourth Tuesday, I believe.
Fourth Tuesday.
At 5:30. Or 6:00. Or 6:00, something. Yeah.
6 o'clock, I believe.
I can make a 6. I need 6.
Any objections to Cliff taking that spot?
What did I disagree to?
A lot.
Historic district. And they don't always meet every month either.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Canfield, Lera?
Yes.
LCTV entitlement, Mr. Salzweedle?
Yep, I'm still good with that.
Marty, you have to be over a length hour?
Yeah, I don't think Cliff was, I don't hire him.
They shortened him up to four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, but didn't we just approve, they get all kinds of money for that?
Yeah. When do they meet? Uh, usually Tuesday through about Friday afternoon. Yeah. Look Committee, that's another one. I took that from Jim.
No, yeah, you were the last one.
Okay. Um, I'd be happy to let Jim or Cliff have that one if they want. They're short on boards. They got 6 there.
You don't see my name much of anywhere, so...
When do they meet?
Look meets twice a year.
Twice a year.
Oh, yeah. Usually only, usually four of them.
Uh, any objections to Cliff taking over for me on Look?
I know I can handle that.
All right. Uh, I'm happy with Fire Authority, if that's okay with everyone. Great to getting over, getting on with everybody on Parks and Rec?
Pretty well.
All right. Perry, you got any objections to that?
Okay.
Uh, and then Marty, what's your question still?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that something that everybody, we feel like we've divvied up?
Is there anything, Cliff?
Yeah.
Uh, we went, is there one?
That takes some away if you want it.
Well, I'd say, I don't know. I mean, you, I'll happily take your Chamber thing, but if you're...
I gotta ask Liz, I don't know if she wants that.
Well, that's true.
That one, um, I would be happy to give to you. I think you're a lot more of an asset over there.
Well...
Than I am. I think you've worked enough with them that...
Right.
You can provide. And then I, we still have...
Well, yeah, you're...
All the Chambers say, cause Mike and I attend vision anyways, so. I think you'd be a lot, lot bigger asset on that Chamber board than I am.
Okay.
So if there's no objections to that, I'll be, I'll give that one to Cliff. Uh, anything else?
Well, I go to the Tuesday, but I, I think this is different. Isn't that a different Chamber meeting?
No, it's the main board meeting. Once a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Tuesday. I've been going to them, but I'm, I'm with...
Mary DeBoer?
He never showed up, it was Mike and I.
No, I, I go...
They have Mike there. But no, if you wanted us to, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah? Right on my way to the store.
Put a rhyme about it so you can get in and out easily. All right. Anybody wanna talk about this anymore? No? Susie, you got a new list for us?
Yes, I will make a new list.
Thank you. Uh, board commission reports, Mr. Canfield?
Uh, unfortunately, there was some confusion about the date of the meeting and, uh, three of us were replaced for the latter meeting, I believe. So, but next month I'll be there.
Same as you can't copy.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
I didn't want to call him and bug him, so...
All right. You have an appointment? Um... All right. Um, Mr. Chambers?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time. You need next week or by call.
Mr. Salzweedle?
Uh, harbor board meeting went well, the first one. Uh, Chairman Regan will be presenting to us sometime in March, uh, what the plan is for 2019 and for our approval on that. Um, LCTV Fund, February 8, deadline is approaching fast. Get your request in, uh, 5:00 PM to City Hall. So it's right around the corner. So that's what I got.
All right.
That's a bed ready.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, we just covered pretty much the majority of the Fire Authority meeting there. And that public hearing on the 4th is going to, I think, cover most of what we talked about at DDA, so... That's all I got. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns with any of the monthly reports? It's your turn. City manager report?
Uh, don't have much to report. Um, the, uh, just a reminder that next Wednesday, from 5 to 9, the Fire Station, Lou Venter will be here, um, for our facilitation training. Um, next council meeting, there will be a presentation from Public Works, um, about their staffing issues. And, um, that's all I have.
All right. Appointments. Uh, no applications yet for Board of, Construction Board of Appeals, right?
No.
And then, um, were we able to get in touch with Brian about the district? District commission? Still not. Okay. Um, he doesn't. Um, and then the DDA, we had two applications that we talked about last meeting and then we never approved them. Um, and then there was the third, Mike Springer, who's going to, with council approval, take his DDA spot back. We could fill up those three. It's Julie, Mike, and then who's the other? We have the third applicant?
Eric Whitehead.
Eric Whitehead, that's right. Um, so we need to officially appoint them, so we need a consensus on that officially for the minutes. Cause they showed up to DDA and we had to make them sit in the back row and not talk, so...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have one to add. We forgot at our last council meeting when we set the committee for fair rounds, we forgot to have Brian Doyle.
Brian Doyle. All right. Uh, consensus first on the three DDA appointments. Everybody good with that? The two from last week and then Mike Springer. Uh, consensus then to have Brian Doyle to the fair ground. What do we end up on? Feasibility committee or whatever?
I just called the fair ground committee.
Yeah.
Um, and they, their meeting will be Thursday at 7:00.
Brian's still gonna be on. Get in touch with him, let him know.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
Consensus on that one too?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, council comments, Cliff?
Uh, learned a lot about wastewater treatment plant last Monday. And I had a really good meeting with Bob Rogers yesterday. Um, he's really spearheading the Lowell Community Center effort. And those people are serious and they wanna get it done. And I'm gonna be kinda touching base with them. I can't go to their regular meeting cause it doesn't work with my retail schedule, but I'm gonna keep my finger on the pulse of that.
That's, uh, during the day meeting, I could...
That's it.
5:30. 5:30.
Yeah.
That's my morning. I'd be, I'd get up early.
It's on Thursdays at 5:30 or 6:00.
Yeah. I know Bob spearheaded the thing to redo the Stony Lakeside, um, playground equipment. And it ended up working out really well. And he's done a ton with the impact.
Love you.
So...
Oh, yeah.
There's a guy I have, a good guy I have on a project, it's him. And he'll be on that fair ground feasibility board the rest of the year.
Yes.
Okay. Good, Cliff?
Yeah.
Mr. Salzweedle?
I'm good in that, thank you.
Mr. Canfield?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Chambers?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm also good. Mr. Salzweedle, I'm on 12.
Uh, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn until 35.
Support. Motion in a second. All those with favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.